This is the February 7th, 2013, meeting of the Situate Planning Board. I need a motion to accept the agenda.
So moved.
Do I have a second?
I second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
First item on the agenda is the public hearing for the zoning articles that have been prepared for the annual town meeting. These articles are identical to what was published in the legal ad. It's been available at the town hall and available at the town clerk's office. The copies have been provided. People in the audience. We have them listed as medical marijuana, flexible open space, village business, and accessory dwellings. If the board would so indulge me, I would do accessory dwellings so that we can get some of these people home earlier than later.
I see some people waiting, so that I recognize, so.
I don't want to raise trouble on that first article, though, so maybe you should. Just kidding, just kidding.
Next year.
Okay.
That sounds good.
So we will do accessory dwellings as the first article. Bear with me while I get my copy of it out. By way of background, the proposed changes includes changes in sections 200, 420, 530, and 560 to add definitions to limit accessory dwellings to a maximum of two bedrooms and ninety square feet for floor area. It eliminates the affordable accessory dwelling section, which really, according to the state, has not been used at all. And move the provisions for accessory dwellings into the business district and into the village business overlay district, so they'll come back up and fit in with mixed use. And finally, we include a certification process where the owners will annually certify to the planning board if they reside on the property. Having said that, let me ask if there's any questions from the board? Okay, we'll open it up to the public.
I have a question. We have an affordable accessory dwelling. My name is Deborah Burke.
We need to get your name and your address.
Okay. My name is Deborah Burke.
Yep.
Spelled B-E-R-K. I live at 202 Old Oak and Bucket Road.
Yep.
And we actually had the first permit, I think, for an affordable accessory dwelling. And it is indeed still there on our property. And when I saw in the manner that you were eliminating them, I wasn't really sure what that meant to us, given that.
It won't mean anything to you.
Your law?
No.
Okay.
No, you're grandfathered, so the new law only applies going forward, so it won't have any effect. You'll still.
You've been assured of the.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Will it rescind the.
I mean, we have a thing in the registry of deeds. That's an agreement between us and the town of Situate.
Yeah, won't make any difference. When you pass a new law, it only affects going forward. It doesn't affect going back, and so you're considered grandfathered, so everything that you have is still in place.
Statement of fact.
Yes, absolutely.
He's a lawyer.
Yeah, I'm an attorney, so.
Well, that was a real sure.
I'm not an attorney, but I played one on duty.
But going forward, no one else will be able to do affordable accessory because we're eliminating that section. It hasn't been used.
I imagine it hasn't been used much yet.
Hasn't been used at all.
That's the reason for eliminating it.
But I want to point this out, given that, that Laura's not here, but she was a big help to us in obtaining, you know, the permit, and we were figuring out what the rules were going to be and so on and so forth. And when I actually got a tenant in there, I contacted her and I contacted the housing authority, and no one responded in terms of my, in other words, I have an affordable accessory dwelling, which should be counted towards our quota, right?
Right, true.
It's a good thing for Situate to be doing this, I think. But it sounds like no one really knows how to go about it. I mean, I said, do you want, do you have a form that you want me to fill out? What do you want me to do? I'm not going to send my tenants W2s just over there. I need to have some kind of a format in which to do it. So I don't know if I'm the only person, but certainly there is one.
Yeah.
Affordable accessory dwelling. And you might want to talk to the housing authority or something and find out if there's some way that we could be counted, you know, towards the percentage.
I'm sure, I'm sure there is.
Yeah, I think, I think the reason they probably don't pay attention to it is that we're so far away from our ten percent threshold.
Nobody cares.
That, yeah, I mean, if we were closer to that, they'd be counting every single one, but I haven't looked at it in a while, but we're not even close in Situate. We need a lot more affordable housing here, so.
Dan, didn't you say that the laws had changed? Like, when we first did this, the accessory dwelling and the affordable option, then something happened with the state that kind of made it sort of moot?
No, no, I think, my understanding is that originally, when we passed it, I wasn't involved, but we only had affordable accessory dwellings in town. The town decided that we would only allow this if they were affordable to encourage more affordable in town, and then there was.
Yeah, it was a good plan, but I don't imagine that many people have extra buildings on their property that they want to turn in.
No. And then there was a provision added, which is the, you know, non-affordable, just regular accessory dwellings. And at some point, that one was made so much more liberal than the affordable, you have to jump through a lot of hoops to have an affordable one. There's all kinds of requirements and filings and everything, and the town decided they just wanted to have people be able to do regular accessory dwellings without all the affordable restrictions. And as a result of that, we don't get any affordable ones in because I don't know why anybody would do it anymore, because there aren't the barriers to doing it, so. So that's why we're doing away with it. We haven't had any more coming in.
So we should apply to just have.
I doubt you can. You probably have a deed restriction.
That was actually my question. Does this, does this rescind that, the requirements?
No, I imagine you have a deed restriction, and when you got approved, so.
It's fine.
They said fifteen years.
As long as you're not eliminating it.
Right. It's fifteen years, and I'm fine with that. I mean, I don't have it.
We don't have any facts.
Yeah, I guess, yeah, they might be able to come back and reapply, but it depends on what the deed restriction is and, you know, what the covenant was at the time and all of that, so.
Well, it's fifteen years, and that's fine with us. I mean, our person who lives there is a great person, and, you know, but.
What I'll do is I'll check.
I personally would like to see more of them, but it's.
It's just not happening.
It's not happening, and.
That's the reasoning. We're, just so I understand, Dan, we're grandfathered in, the covenant is the covenant.
Yep.
End of story.
Yep.
Mm-hmm.
That was easy.
Watch the Celtics.
Just for the record, we got two happy people. Anybody else on accessory dwelling? Steven?
Yeah, if you could, Steve Neworkland. I think what you'll find is that when it was originally passed, it was not the affordable, but it was a regular accessory dwelling, but the requirements were stricter for people to be able to have them.
Hmm.
And you couldn't, you couldn't do additions on non-conforming structures and then put an accessory dwelling in it unless it became affordable. So they were trying to allow more dwellings to have these type of units in them, but they said, well, if you don't conform now, we'll let you do it, but.
If it's affordable.
It's got to be an affordable restriction on it, if that's the case. So they have, they did start with just an accessory dwelling, and it was, I don't even know how long ago now, fifteen years, maybe, longer than that.
Yeah.
And it was added afterwards.
Well, I think, maybe I'm thinking of other towns, but when it first came out, a lot of it was supposed to be sort of a carrot, you know, to say, you know, if you do this, it's got to be affordable, and we'll increase our affordable stock, and, but at least in Situate and a lot of other towns, it's gone the other direction where people just weren't doing them. So they said, we should just open it up to anybody to do these. And as a result, they wind up being affordable a lot of the time anyway, because they're smaller units and the rental's lower, and, but I think Laura's not here, but she looked to see how many we have had affordable, and, I mean, that's the only one I'm aware of. We haven't had for years and years.
We had one, we had one, it was earlier this year, that we had, no, earlier last year. It had to go to the Board of Selectmen because it was affordable.
Yeah.
The owner of the house was going to Texas, and there was a problem with transferring it. So in effect, what we did is we, we came back up and voted an accessory dwelling capability for them, and then we had to have the Board of Selectmen come back up and take away.
To remove the.
To remove the original restriction.
Affordable restriction, because they couldn't sell their house with the affordable restriction on the unit, so.
Let's take care of that. Best of my knowledge, that's the only other one that we've had.
So I think there's better ways to get affordable housing. That didn't turn out to be what people thought it was going to be, so that's why that's going away anyway. Nobody's using it, so we're just focusing on the regular.
Yeah, I think trying to consolidate and make it easier.
Yeah.
Anything else on the accessory dwelling?
Joe Joyce, 39 Ocean Ave. Are you going to discuss, I just came in, are you going to discuss accessory dwelling or are you just asking for questions?
We're just asking for questions. I think it's been, it's been available, it was in the ad and the copy that we're looking to go forward with.
Okay, I just have a few questions, then.
Sure.
I'm a little uncertain. You're suggesting you go from forty percent, minimum of seven fifty to forty percent, maximum nine hundred square foot?
I think that's.
Yes.
Yep.
Also, I see here, it refers to core area, net core area. What would be the definition of net floor area?
It's on the first, it's on the first page. Oh, do you, do you have the full?
I have the zoning here, and I have the, what was online regarding the discussion.
Okay, there's a.
What we've done is, in fact.
Yeah, we have a proposed new one that you should look at.
We added definitions in section 200, just to make sure that they're clarified. Okay. And then net floor area is defined as the area of the interior of a dwelling, considered habitable space by the most recent official edition of the Mass Building Code.
Okay, so that'd be like meeting code?
Yes.
In other words, it's not floor area in and eve or anything like that.
Yeah.
Right. And the 4D and this section, it talks about the annual certificate and also not transferable. Is that related to the affordable, or is that related to all accessory dwellings?
They're all going to be the same now. They're, they're all just accessory dwellings, and so that'll be for everything.
So it is saying here that annually you have to do something, or if, let's say I want to leave the property to my son, is there anything that he has to do?
Yeah, annually, you have to file a certification that the owner occupies either the house or the accessory dwelling, and also it's required at the time that it changes ownership. So if you sold it to your son or you transferred title to your son, he'd have to submit a certification at that point, saying that he's going to live in either the accessory dwelling or the house.
So that's all that we require. For instance, say I sold my property to you, you would just have to certify you're living on the property.
Yep.
The objective of that is so that someone doesn't have the wrong idea that it's two properties they can rent out.
Exactly.
Correct.
But it's no reapplying for approvals or nothing?
No.
No, no, it's just a piece of documentation that we.
It's a way for us to, to check on it and make sure that people aren't doing this just to have a rental property that they're not living in, because the point of it was to help people out initially if they had a relative that needed to move in with them or they need a little bit of extra income, but it was never intended to be something you just create duplexes to rent out to people.
What's the logic of going from the seven fifty to, a minimum of seven fifty to a maximum of nine hundred?
Well, before, the way it was written, there was a certain percentage. I can't, was it thirty-three?
Forty percent.
Forty, was it? But it mean, if you had like a ten thousand square foot house, I mean, you could build an accessory dwelling up to that, that amount. You could do four thousand.
Four thousand square feet, conceivably.
And now it's, now it's the lesser of.
Or conversely, if you had a thousand square foot house, you were still allowed to do a seven hundred and fifty square foot accessory dwelling, almost as large as the house. That's really what got us onto this, talking about this particular change.
Have there been any problems with size of these things at all?
Yes. You may ask, you may ask the front row.
This came about as a direct result of the last application we had in here that, you know, we, we didn't like the result under the current law, so we looked to change it. But it was the right result under the law that we had, but we didn't think the law was really adequate, so.
The reason I'm sensitive to it is, I think the accessory dwelling is a progressive thing. I think it's a great thing that we have in this town. And the demographics of our society, where things are changing, it's very common to have a divorced son or divorced daughter with one child, two chi- children. And when you lay it out and you put these numbers together, seven fifty or nine, it makes a difference. And, you know, it might be the difference of having a comfortable set of stairs or an extra bathroom or, you know, a bedroom for your child, a boy, and a bedroom for a daughter. It's a great thing that we have in here in Situate. And we've had it for a long time. It's never really been abused that I've known of. You know, the commercial application I can see is different, you know, but usually when people spend, I'm in the construction business, so I do talk to people about this. It's usually the parent, you know, the mother or father. They don't want them in a nursing home. It's a good thing. So when I look at the square footage, I just wonder, you know, when you hit a number like that, and if it just so happens, it makes sense to be twenty-five more square feet, you know, so when I look at it going to nine hundred, you know, sometimes nine fifty might be the difference. And, and I've seen that situation, you know, where you're just looking to make something work and gee, it doesn't work, so that's why I'm asking, it has been problems. I understand yet that it must be a problem.
The, the problem really was when people are putting these on very small houses. So you can have a house that's eight, under the old law, you could have a house that was eight hundred square feet, and you could put a seven hundred and fifty square foot accessory on it, and it doesn't look accessory necessarily, and it's almost the same size as the main house, and it just was never the intent of this provision to allow people to create something that looks like a duplex, you know, so if you're, so we took that and now are turning it into the lesser of, you know, those numbers. So if you have a small house, it's going to make the accessory smaller by comparison. So it, so it hasn't been abused, it's just, it's not the right result, and we've seen that happen a few times recently.
Were you discussing this again before the meeting?
We, we discussed it the last two or three meetings here, and this is sort of the final step. It's going to go on the town warrant, and it's going on the up-for-vote at the town meeting, and so this is the opportunity for anybody to speak up if they don't like what we've come up with.
This is the public hearing prior, and then based on this, the board will vote whether to go forward with it in the annual town meeting, and then a town meeting will be devoted up or down, vote to change up or down.
Yeah, this is the language that this board came up with after about three meetings together, working through the language, so this is sort of, you know, a chance for anybody to point out something they really hate about it.
Well, and we did actually talk about certain sized lots, where we thought that was going to be very complicated. So in the case of like the Garden Road example, we were saying, oh, well, maybe that, that restriction of the square footage is only for this size of lot, but.
I didn't, but.
Well, we discussed it, excuse me.
Yeah, I know, right, yeah.
And the reality is, we, we have to draw the line somewhere.
Yeah.
And someone's going to be unhappy with the line no matter what we do, so we just pick out the, the best line that we thought, and sometimes the line that nobody likes is the best.
I mean, if it's nine fifty for one example, it may be nine seventy-five for the next.
Well, I know. You see, nine hundred is not that big, really. You know, when we talk numbers, nine hundred is not that big.
It's actually more liberal than the towns around us. We surveyed the towns around us, Marshfield and Co., House and other places, and I, I actually personally was trying to get it to be more restrictive than this, but we had to compromise as a board to come up with something that we could all agree upon, but this provision is much more liberal than all the towns around us, by a big stretch.
Maybe they should be looking what Situate does.
Well, maybe, I mean, that's why, yeah, you could argue that certainly.
Because nine hundred, when you do, it's, you know, it's not that big. And it's like you're relegating someone to nine hundred. If, if you have a bond, which this town is full of, that can be turned into a accessory dwelling, when someone, first of all, people don't do it unless they can afford it, so make a commitment on that bond. It's not a small.
Well, the last one we had in was about, I think, seven fifty square feet. It was two bedrooms, a living room, a kitchen, it had plenty of room. It was, you know, it's a good size apartment, a two-bedroom, so it's not, you know, it was by no means small.
Yeah.
So, I mean, I think nine hundred is generous for something that's meant to be an apartment.
Right, and accessory.
Especially if it's thirty by thirty.
Yeah.
But I mean, if you had a second level to that, you know, if you were twenty by thirty or twenty by twenty, four hundred square feet, that would meet the nine hundred, but twenty by thirty is not that large. It's basically a living room, decent bathroom, and a kitchen, and then two bedrooms above it, you're right up there.
Right, but it's meant to be an apartment, it's not meant to be a house. This is, this isn't attached to a house, you know, or next to a house, so.
You know, it's, it's been around since nineteen eighty-two, and I've seen it many times. I see it many times. It's, it's not necessarily designed just to be a little apartment. You know, if you have, if you have a family of three, a single parent with two children, it's not a lot of space. It's, it really isn't. So I'm a little reserved in the nine hundred. You know, twelve hundred is not huge, but I think nine hundred could be a bit restrictive. That's my point. You know, it's like husband and wife, nine hundred square feet is not a lot, you know. And a lot of times, people are, it's a parent coming to live with their, their children, or perhaps it's the other way around. I think the square footage is something to consider. You know, I, I, if I had no, I'm sorry to come in at this late stage, we've already discussed it three times, because I would actually lay out some plans to see what it means, but once you go to the second level, thirty by thirty on the first floor, it's fine, but generally, you're going up because you don't have that much ground space.
We appreciate the comment. We spent a lot of time looking at this issue. We had plans of other units. We've looked at them over the years, and we did a survey of all the towns around us, and nine hundred is about two hundred and fifty, or one hundred and fifty square feet more than any other town around us.
I think some of the other language is that the accessory dwelling should be subordinate to the main dwelling.
I agree.
But it seems to me you're describing something that might look more like two houses on a single lot.
Right, I am. You know, it's like, there are many bonds or outbuildings in the town of Situate.
Presumably, that's a larger lot, though. We, the cases that we sort of looked at had perhaps small lots, maybe even non-conforming lots. You know, if you want to start tying this to lot size, and we discussed that, for a twenty thousand or forty thousand square foot lot, it might in fact be a different situation, but we felt that got too complex. You know, there's a chance to amend this again, obviously. We've just amended it for this year's town meeting for the vote, and.
See, that's why I mentioned it. Last year, I thought was a great progressive move, I thought it was very good, and it's a year later, we're, we're adjusting it. Based on what I understand, I'm not opposed to the other things where someone acknowledges that they're living there, and, you know, it's not a big deal. Just I, I do question on the square footage. If it's, it's not arbitrary, but it just may be restrictive. You know, if a person has a three thousand square foot home, twelve hundred square feet is not, not disproportionate. And twelve hundred square feet would be basically maybe a one, like, very garage, you know, barn or something, two levels.
Two levels.
But it goes back to how you count the square footage. If you're counting it by living space, which is seven foot one in height, you know, it's not so problematic.
But as I say, I think we needed to put, put a number out there, and I think this is, in terms of our discussion, the previous discussions, and what's available around this joining towns, and that seemed to make sense to us, so.
Thank you.
But your point is well made.
Thanks, appreciate it.
Anyone else? Steven?
I'm going to try and bring up just two points on this, and then I'm going to bite my lip. Transfer of ownership. A comment was made that we don't have to apply for a new special permit, so I'm wondering if a board member can tell me, in section five thirty point four, and it says, a special permit for accessory dwelling shall terminate upon the sale of, and the new owner shall apply for a new permit, how we can constitute that that's not a new permit. Me, it's certainly worded that way.
It is a new permit. Maybe we misspoke.
You have to apply for a new special permit if you sell the dwelling.
See, that's a problem.
Right. But that's only one point, though.
But that was always in place, right?
That needs to be corrected.
Why does that need to be, I don't understand why it needs to be corrected.
Well, anybody who has an accessory dwelling now, if they sell the house, no bank is going to finance the sale of an apartment that's now illegal if they sell the property.
That's why we added the provision in at the end, and in fact, this tracks what Marshfield has, other than we made it more generous where we allowed you to come in before the transfer and get it taken care of, so.
Okay, so in section, wait a minute, no? Get this straight here.
And this is not dissimilar to most other towns that we looked at, Steve.
Five thirty point two, tell me how there's no conflict where it says, an application for accessory dwelling shall be the fee owner or the owners of a detached, single-family dwelling on which the lot is located. You're not a fee owner if you have it under purchase and sales agreement. So that section should be changed to match the other section.
Which section are you reading under five?
Five thirty point two A. Says you have to be the fee owner.
Because, Steve, if you look at, if you look at five thirty point four A.
No, I'm looking at five thirty point two.
I saw that. If you look at five thirty point four A, it says that you can apply ahead of time, but it only becomes effective after the transfer of ownership is completed.
But this says you can't apply unless you're the fee owner of the property. So it shouldn't say fee owner, it should say, have the property under purchase and sales agreement and/or be the fee owner in order to not.
I, I think, I think we would still want the fee owner to apply for it. They have control of the property, so I don't think.
So the fee owner is going to apply for a permit for someone who's going to buy the house before they sell the house, and then when they sell the house, the permit becomes no good, doesn't work.
Wouldn't it be similar to getting a Title V approval?
You have a purchase and sales agreement on a property, apply for the permit, get the approval from the planning board before they buy the property, so that a bank will actually finance the sale. So somehow, that's got to get worded in there. I don't know.
So if we, so if we just said in five thirty point two A, if we just say or a proposed transferee under section five thirty point four A.
Anybody who's got a, you can't say fee owner. Anybody who's got the property under agreement should be able to file for a permit, and that's the way it is now. I mean, whether it's with any type of permit in town.
He's just, just cross-referencing it, it's fine.
Yeah, they just conflict, that's all.
Just say, to say or under, you know, or a proposed new owner under section five thirty point four A.
What about a Title V approval, Steve? If I've got, if I'm selling, I've got to get that in place before I can sell, right? It's not the new owner that gets that, it's the seller.
Right, but that's not what this says.
No, but I mean, you could do it that way.
If you're saying that you want a new seller to, to re-up the permit before he sells the property.
Yeah.
There's no reason to do that. What you're really trying to do is get the new owner to come in to comply with the permit.
It's just a cross-reference.
It happens if you decide to give him a permit when he sells the house, the new owner comes in.
So what we'll do is we'll reword five thirty point two A to come back up, to reference five thirty point four A.
Yeah, it's just a language change, it's not a substantive change from what we intend, it's just a clarification.
It's the crafty, that's all.
Sure.
But I would like to tie on to that for five thirty point four, for my conversation. Special permit for accessory dwelling shall terminate upon the sale of, or the transfer of title of primary dwelling. My question is why? Why?
Because we're issuing a new permit to the new owner, and the new owner then has obligation to submit the annual certification. That's why you have to have it as a new permit.
Why have it, why have it terminate?
Because that's how, because that's how you.
Probably already have it here that every year you have to do something to do that.
It's a check to make sure that when the property transfers, they're actually complying with the requirements to be qualified to have an accessory dwelling. And a lot of other towns use this. Because if it doesn't happen, what happens frequently is that it gets transferred and they ignore this, and they really don't qualify for it because it's not owner occupied. So this is a common... I looked at probably a dozen communities that have this exact same provision. And it's a check to make sure that they comply with what they're supposed to.
I think you're putting a big burden on the people that have them because a buyer's gonna be very reserved about that. I'd be scared stiff. I would wanna know for a fact that I'm buying a property that I don't have to come back in. You may not be here. It may be a completely different board. And they may not understand what you're thinking. They may think differently. You're thinking just so that it doesn't become a rental property completely, which I'm not sure that's happened in the town, et cetera. I think this is unnecessary. I'm afraid of this. "A special permit for accessory dwelling shall terminate upon the sale or transfer of the title of primary dwelling, accessory dwelling on the lot. Any new owner shall be required to apply for a new approval of a special permit for accessory dwelling, for continuation of the use of accessory dwelling." Is that... Do they come before the ZVA? Do they just go down alone?
It's all S.
The planning board. They come here.
They file for all the permits?
What would why? What would be the logic of that?
The logic is it's the best time to check to make sure it's owner occupied. And it's been shown in other cases in other towns around the state that when that's not done, these do turn into rental properties quite frequently. So that's the best time to check it. I don't know.
I think this is over bureaucratic. You know, it's like if I come in and I get a permit from you, and I spent three months, and I come in here and I hire a lawyer or something, and I come in and I do that, and I leave, I have that permit, whatever that might be. That's the process here at town. If someone goes through and gets an accessory dwelling, and they sell that property and transfer it to their family member, why should they have to come back in and reapply?
It sets up the process that we've talked about, where you come back up and you make the annual certification.
But don't they have to do that anyway? Didn't they say they have to do an annual certification?
And that's what this does, is set that, make sure that person knows as a buyer of the property, that he has to come back and do that.
But if I understand correctly, and this is the first time I saw this because I got this information offline, this wasn't online, but if I have an accessory dwelling annually now, the new policy's gonna be, I have to verify that I'm an owner occupied?
Yes.
That does it? So if I wanna sell it to this gentleman here, why should he have to come in and reapply? Who to have it?
It's a hammer. It doesn't get done frequently. It's a hammer to say that when... It's like Title V. You know, you go to transfer the property. That's the best time that the state can check to make sure you're complying. Same concept.
I think it's kinda scary.
Well, if I buy a property from Dan that has, he's got the permit, he's got the accessory dwelling, and I buy it, let's say we don't have this provision, then it's like, yeah, I'm supposed to come in to the planning board, but it's like, I didn't sign any documents. I mean, there's a permit there.
It's already in the chain of title. So you have to comply with the chain of title if it's a special permit for the property. We do this with conservation orders and conditions all the time. When you train, there's a condition in every order of conditions in the town of Situate that says when you sell your property, you have to notify the conservation commissioner of the change of ownership. That may be a better way to do this, that when you sell your property, the special permit's already on record. So it's on record in perpetuity. If they do a transfer, an attorney picks that up at the closing or before the closing, they would have to notify Laura or whoever, the planning board, that there's been a transfer of property. And if she wanted to draft a letter out that said, "Make sure you adhere to these provisions," you have to make sure that it's owner occupied. That can be done without nullifying the special permit. So there is a way... Again, we do that with the orders of conditions all the time, every week.
You would hope the seller or the realtor would make the new buyer aware of that early in the process so that they know what they're buying.
Correct. And it is in the chain of title. Once it's on record, that's it. You can't take it off record. So it is in record. And it's on record with a condition that you guys would have on the special permit that says it has to be owner occupied. So anybody buying that that doesn't adhere to that permit, you then could turn around and certainly take away the permit and say, "This is not owner occupied. You're violating the special permit." And you could haul them back in again, without making everyone have to come back in to get a new permit every time there's a transfer of ownership.
The problem is, it's a question of enforcement. I mean, the reality is, you do systems like that, it just doesn't get enforced, and nobody pays attention to it. So I mean, this is intended to be onerous, and intended to catch the attention of people when they buy a property to say, "Wow, I need to pay attention to this, and I need to certify it and make sure it's owner occupied." And the problems we've had in town have not been, this is overly bureaucratic, even if this is a new change. It's been neighborhoods having problems with losing their character and people taking advantage of it. So that's what the balance is here. It's not, you know, is nine hundred not enough? And it's gonna cause somebody heartaches? No. Are we setting a reasonable restriction on the square footage to protect the character of neighborhoods? That's what this is all about.
The square footage, I think, actually works pretty good. I do... I'm sorry, but I do, I agree that the character of these is to be small housekeeping units. So I fully agree with the board. I think your numbers are reasonably accurate. Yeah, there's gonna be some cases when maybe they should've been bigger. If it's a big mansion out in the west end and somebody wanted twelve hundred square feet, probably wouldn't be a detriment to the neighborhood. But I certainly understand the problem these people have when you're in an area with nine hundred square foot houses and they wanna put a seven hundred and fifty square foot apartment. That is a changing character in the neighborhood. But, that being said, those have to go to the zoning board of appeals because they're pre-existing non-conforming, the dwellings. And if you increase to more than twenty percent in Situate, you need to get a special permit from the zoning board that says you're not substantially more detrimental to the neighborhood. So if I were you, I would be watching for the zoning board of appeals. Did they determine that it was not detrimental?
It's not gonna apply.
Who's not gonna apply?
Well, we could talk afterward.
We looked into that.
We heard on it.
If it's greater than twenty percent increase, it has to go to the zoning board.
As a person who's affected in this neighborhood, I am very confident by knowing that a new owner is made very aware before they buy the property, that not only is it on their deed, but every year they gotta get their butt down here to sign something and say, "Yes, I am owner occupied." Because I can guarantee you that in within a couple of years, we're gonna have two pieces of property rented.
I think this... And if I can through the channel, I totally agree with what she just said. And to clarify that, you will still have the provision that they have to come in once a year to make sure that it's owner occupied. And they will still have the restriction that says, when that's changed on record, that it has to be an owner occupant that's purchasing it. I'm assuming that their problem is not who this person is gonna sell that to in the future. It's that whoever owns that house complies with being owner occupied.
See, we wanna see them, though. We want them to come to us when it changes ownership. We don't want them just to submit a form or forget to submit one, and five years go by and then we get a complaint from a neighbor. There's a new owner, we wanna see them. We want them to come into us and prove to us that it's gonna be owner occupied, and that's the point.
If they're not reading the permit, why would they come anyway?
Well, maybe they won't, but then they don't have a permit. And if we catch them, then they won't be able to occupy it, so.
So they're not gonna get the permit later on? If they're not gonna read the permit that says they have to be owner occupied, they're certainly not gonna get the permit.
If they get a... If they have a good attorney, they'll point that, you know, they'll catch this. Some people won't.
And they will make sure it's owner occupied. That's the only point. But the second point that I had, and this is the last one I'm gonna hold it to, are we no longer gonna allow accessory dwellings in the business district?
We just moved it to a different section. We moved it to the village overlay section.
So it's not allowed in the business district?
It is allowed.
Only the village overlay district?
Well, yeah, but that's all the business districts except for one or two parcels. I think it's one parcel in Green Bush and Humrock. It doesn't include those two areas or the North Situate area.
Okay. And what I'm reading, again, I apologize because as what happened here, I just picked this up when I walked in the door, I'm kinda thumbing through it fast. I apologize because I was gonna try and do this ahead of time. You've got, there's another conflict. I'm assuming that you, in your area that talks about allowing these things in businesses, you don't intend to conflict with the definition of an accessory dwelling because you're only allowing them in single-family dwellings. Based on the definition, an accessory dwelling has to be in a single-family structure. So I'm sure that that probably leads to wordsmith a little bit to include businesses if you'd like to have that.
Okay, definitely.
Be in businesses? Sure.
Good point.
There's some people who might appreciate these in business districts in something other than a single-family dwelling.
Yeah. Yep, that's a good catch.
And I don't know what else I'm gonna find in this. I apologize, but I mean, it's got some holes.
And I wanna tie onto that, five thirty point four. There's a lot of work done here. Stephen mentioned, on the waterfront, it's conservation. They have regulations. We're not having one for the area that the new buyer is doing that. I think we're seeing this out. I think we have the wrong perspective on this. They may be having a problem at their particular location. Most people haven't violated this. This has been around since nineteen eighty-two. Huh?
I don't think it's been quite.
Quite, quite. If it isn't, that's quite. But the thing is this, people aren't abusing it. And I think that's an unnecessary requirement. People, people would be afraid of that. And maybe perhaps that's what you're looking for. But I'm not. You know, we're a self-governing society, and I don't think we need to come back in for this. If it's recorded at the registry of deeds on the title, what's the problem with that? We're not going down and making people come in with conservation approval.
This may be a little heavy-handed, but I think he gets the point across as to what this board expects him to do.
I found it heavy-handed.
And I appreciate you telling me that, but I'm sitting here and you know...
But why? What's the objective here?
The objective is to come back up and to make sure that I don't end up with, what starts out as an accessory dwelling ended up being multiple units on the lot.
Okay, I hear you. And I wanna say, you want people to come up here, you want a person to sell their home and tell their buyer, "You're gonna have to go down and apply." And they can't guarantee that they're gonna be approved. It's not guaranteed. You have to go in. They can say, "Well, you should be approved." But the next board members may not think the way you're thinking. You just wanna make sure it's owner occupied. But the next board members may say, just like Laura said, "It isn't that long. It hasn't been around that long." It hasn't been around that long.
But you don't make zoning in what may happen in the future. You look at it with what...
That's correct.
What the issue is right now, and you look to address that particular issue or issues.
Correct, so...
And that's, this is the way that we've opted to do that.
I agree. What you're saying is, in fear of future people selling these properties and renting them both out, the odds of that are very low. But I think we have enough enforcement where they're registered at the registry of deeds, everything that goes through conservation, that's how it's policed.
Your point's understood.
But how do we get... How do we influence a change in that?
We don't.
We don't. We've already agreed to this, so.
Town meeting four.
Town meeting.
And I don't think... We agree with your perspective, so.
What we want is, we want a personal commitment between the board and each successive owner that they're gonna play by the rules. We wanna look in their eyes, we want them to look in our eyes, and make sure we have a meeting of the minds on that issue. That's what we want.
That's how we protect the neighborhoods, and we have had some problems, so.
Basically, you, I think you're taking the perspective that people with these properties are not honest or upright.
That's not the case. That is not the case. That is not the case.
Who else has to come down and prove that the...
We just wanna make sure that people understand what they're getting themselves into, and that there's no issues and no uncertainty in anybody's mind.
It's actually a protection for the buyers as well when they come into it, having something heavy-handed like this, that they know what's required of them. And if you don't have something like this...
You're using the word "heavy-handed."
It's meant to be heavy-handed. It's meant to be a hammer to force people to comply with what we expect. It is.
Well, I don't understand why it is. We have other codes, why does it have to be a hammer?
We should move on to something else.
But, you know, Nancy Larkham at thirty-three? No, I'm thirty-eight. Poor God, thirty-three. First of all, I wanna thank you for quantifying the word subordinate. That was really good to see. Very happy about that. I will just speak to this gentleman because it was so important through the process that the person sat here and heard the board say, "You must live there." Because we had every reason to believe that the person did not have an intention to live there. So once they do that, though, it's impossible to change it. Once that building is there and those two units are rented, we have no recourse. So if it doesn't happen at the time, that they don't look them in the eye and say, "You have to live there, and do you understand?" For a neighborhood, that felt very comfortable for us, that this person who's gonna be moving into this house knows that she has to live there. And if the house is sold, they should have the same interaction. And you jump through a thousand hoops when you sell a house. This is just one tiny one in the process. But thank you in the bottom.
I think we've got it. Let's agree to disagree on that. Do you have anything else, Steven?
I just wanted to say, again, the protection is there because the permit has a condition that the owner has to live in the house. So don't say there's no protection. If you find out, and it's not gonna be self-regulating, it's gonna be neighborhood regulating. So if you find out the owner's not there, who's gonna call the town hall? It's not gonna be the owner. It's not gonna be these guys, 'cause they don't live in the neighborhood. It's gonna be the neighbors are gonna come in and say, "Hey, that person bought that house, and they're renting it as a two-family, and they don't live there." And Laura is gonna be the first one to send them a letter saying, "You're violating a special permit on record to registry of deeds." That's how it's gonna get regulated. And if they terminate the permit, then they'll have to come back in and prove that they are living there. So there are protections that we've had since the bylaw was out.
Actually, I really just have to clarify that I have been told by the building department multiple times that I do not have the authority to enforce special permits, and that I don't have the authority to go on private property. So in that case, I don't have the authority to enforce. He does, but that's another department, and that's another, they have a whole other bunch of issues.
But the ability to enforce it is within the town hall?
Yeah, the zoning office.
In theory, but practically speaking, it's a whole different thing.
Are there any other points that we wanna talk about?
I just wanna reiterate what she said. We were so grateful that you're changing it so this doesn't happen in any other neighborhood. And I watched your meeting, the twelve twenty-twelve. It was fascinating where you... Maybe it was the second reading, I don't know. But the discussion was interesting, and I have a question about why two things were eliminated since then in the final draft. One is, is that... And I looked at Cohasset and Marshfield both. I looked up their codes. And they both have a provision that if you build a new house, you can't apply for accessory dwelling for three to ten years. Three years in Marshfield, ten years in Cohasset. That's so that people aren't building new houses that already contain rental property. And as a person in a neighborhood, small lots, I think that's really important. And I wondered why you left it out, and is it possible to put it back in?
I agree with you, but I lost on it.
Perhaps I can address that. And it's simply to cover those instances where a family and perhaps in-laws come in together and decide to purchase a home together or build a home together with the idea that right from the very beginning, there will be an accessory dwelling for another household that are still family members. Oftentimes, we see, I know personally, I've observed, you know, a family with children will come in and buy a house or build a house, and then somebody's parents or grandparents will come in as part of the deal and help fund the construction of that. And as that construction, they wanna have an accessory dwelling for the grandparents to live.
So all of these contingencies apply to new construction as well?
Yes.
So they would still, if they, on our little lots, if they built a twelve hundred square foot house, they could only build a four hundred?
Yes, correct, yes.
But isn't that building for two families? Isn't that a multi-family home? When you intentionally know that another family, a son and daughter and two children are gonna move in?
Let me give you... Let me give you my example, okay? And my mother-in-law's ninety-three, okay? And would love to have her live with us, but she's currently in Texas, in the joys of Texas. But to the extent that she was to come up and live with me and for me to put an accessory dwelling on it, right? I have the inability, because of my lot, the location, everything else, to come back up and put an addition on my house.
Yeah.
Okay, so I can't do it. So the only choice for me to do it would be to buy, build a new house, and then come back up and put that accessory dwelling within that new house. And if I had to wait ten years...
But in all deference, I live in a thousand square feet. I bought that house and knew that. I knew I never could move my father in when my mother died. I just knew I couldn't do it. So, I mean, I understand that, but it's...
Well, we could, you give him the second bedroom, he'd live right with you.
Or you'd sell that house and build a new one.
You could buy a used house.
Or I'd have to buy a new... I would have to buy another house. I couldn't do it on my five thousand square foot lot with a thousand square foot...
Just the way Bill can't do it on his.
And I can't do it on mine.
So you would have to buy it.
You'd have to buy it, or tear it.
Or I would have to buy a house that either has an accessory dwelling in it.
Yeah, I don't see that as a problem.
Or I'd have to come up and create it. Or, and what you're doing is precluding for me by building a new house that has accessory dwelling in it.
Well, you could buy a used house and build an accessory dwelling.
Yeah.
All it precludes is building a brand-new house with a brand-new accessory dwelling. That's all it precludes.
It seems like a multi-family house. If you intentionally build a house with two separate living spaces, no matter if it's for one person or four people, by...
Let's take the other end of the spectrum as perhaps an absurd example. But suppose I want to build, maybe not in Situate, maybe in Cohasset, a very large house, and I wanna have an au pair. Or I wanna have several. I wanna have a husband and wife who are cook and butler gardener. Live there.
You're not on five thousand square feet, though.
No, we didn't tie this to lot size, remember?
Yeah, that's... Yeah, that's, yeah, I understand that.
So now, you know, you need an accessory dwelling within that new house.
See, they have a big enough lot to do that.
I just want to say this one last thing. I foresee the perspective is, the accessory dwelling isn't for people to sneak in to rent out both houses. People don't do that. Maybe it'll happen in this situation.
Many?
How do you know it's not happening now?
Well, let me say this.
Wait a minute, let's go through the chair.
Majority of the cases, it doesn't happen. You know, when someone does something like this, it's probably costing them 100 grand. People are not looking for a way to circumvent the code in Situate so they could have two rentals. They want to have two rentals, they can go buy two rentals somewhere else, you know, if you're just looking for investment. What you're talking about is perhaps someone moves out and it gets rented for whatever crazy reason, and they've got them both rented. Okay, understood. But they're not conforming, conformant with the special permit. And I don't see why they have to come in and reapply. You know, I really don't.
I thought we just closed that out.
That dead horse is complaining.
Yeah, I think we've kind of applied that ground.
I'm going to tell you that I respectively disagree with the concept, because I think you're getting the wrong perspective. It's not for people to circumvent, it's for people to provide.
I'm pretty sure we understand both your point and your logic.
Yeah, yeah.
So the question, well, I just wondered why Cohasset and Marshfield both have that contingency, if it's something that you think is not valuable. So I just put my two cents in on that. And the other thing is, I love your idea of shared parking, because the house we, the, on Fay Avenue, or Fay Road, or whatever it is, we showed you a couple of accessory dwelling and it was shared parking, so it didn't look like a duplex, like the property in our street's going to look. And you talked about that. I love that idea, the shared parking, and then why do you need to have two cars for a, you know, an accessory dwelling, you know? And both Cohasset and Marshfield say one off-street parking space, not two, you know? And you can do shared parking, and then it doesn't, and they also are very clear that it should not, that it should look like a single-family dwelling. And with the two driveways, the two entrances and all that, definitely not going to look like a single-family dwelling. So I wondered why you also took that out, because I thought that was a great idea.
I can tell you, it was sort of a lesson in compromise for me, because the first draft I put together had all of that in it. And I think that, you know, everybody has a different perspective on the board, and to come together to get something at all to pass, you know, I had to give up a lot of those things along the way. You know, I think the nice thing, what we're left with, you know, still is a significant improvement.
Absolutely, we agree with that.
Especially the square footage piece is huge for the town. So I think, you know, there's a lot of little things along the way that I think may or may not be good ideas, but I think at the end of the day, the board sort of, I don't want to speak for everybody, but sort of felt like people still have to come in front of us. So as you saw with the Garden Road one near you, we did, you know, have the ability to put some additional requirements on it as we kind of saw fit to make it reasonable. So it wouldn't prohibit us from putting that on it later as a board, it just wouldn't require it. I prefer for it to be required, others wouldn't, but, you know, we still have some...
Well, you might have to say they have to do shared.
We could. We still have some room to put conditions on a permit, and so we still have that ability. It's just not an absolute requirement on a lot of those things.
On that point, with a single-family home, you could have two driveways anyway. I mean, really?
Great.
If I have a single-family home, I could have two driveways.
But I think the way we've compromised, I guess, is basically sitting there saying it's a special permit, so we can come back up and say it's a shared driveway, it's two driveways, it can be whatever, however we want it to be. And by making a special permit, we can specify that.
Well, the last thing I want to ask is how can we support you in April? Do you want us to bring the neighborhood? I mean, we can.
Sure.
We made lots of friends.
That would be very nice.
Bring lots of people, okay, to be supportive of...
The issue of where the support needed is to get it passed at town meeting.
Okay, that's where...
Bring two-thirds of the town to vote in favor.
We can, yeah. We'll bring the people in our neighborhood. We'll just, we'll make sure people know about it and try to get them there. We want to support you.
We're still having issues.
I mean, I think you can anticipate at town meeting, there's going to be people there that will try to defeat this and/or try to amend it to the point that it's ineffective in some cases, so, you know, and that happens at every town meeting, there's some of that there. So we do need, you know, if you're in favor of it, you need to show up and get up, be willing to get up to the microphone and talk if need be, and convince people that this is a big improvement over, you know, what we had before, based on personal experience.
And we'll have pictures by then.
Yeah.
So if it doesn't pass in the general town meeting, everything reverts back to the existing bylaw now?
Stays the way it is, right.
Correct.
You know, another thing to consider is that there's nothing stopping us as the years go on, and we see issues arise that we cannot, we can't further amend it and fix the problems that we see.
Okay.
But we need to fix what we've got, we've got to start somewhere.
Yeah, and we appreciate it greatly, really. You restored my faith in Situate.
I'm sorry that needed to be restored.
I love this place. I love this place. And I was crushed, but I appreciate that you're trying to, you realize that there was something wrong with that and that you want to, you know, make it better. And that's the kind of town I want to live in, so.
I'd love to listen to you talk all night, but we're going to move on.
I'm not going to say everything five times.
Especially when you're saying nice things about us. That's great. Go on.
I just wanted to add one refresher, actually. If I may, Bill, just one real quick comment, is that, you know, I think probably 90% of the people aren't going to really understand the language. Maybe not, I'll say 80%.
Or care.
Or care. So to give a real-world example and to make it sort of simple, it would be, I think, very powerful. That's all I wanted to say.
We can do that.
Okay. Anything else on accessory dwelling?
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you.
Thanks for coming in.
Yeah, appreciate it.
So I think we've come back up, and we've got two changes, as I understand it. One is under accessory dwelling, the definition, we've got to add business to it.
Yep.
So we need to change that. And then the second thing is under 530.2A, we want to come back up and make a reference, add a reference to 530.4.A.
It'll say like an applicant shall be the fee owner or owners, or the...
Or as defined in...
Or the proposed new owner under section 530.4A.
Well, we could just in the special permit section, make reference in there and say something like, notwithstanding the requirements of the general requirement, for this specific one, you don't have, you don't have to be the fee owner until actually you do it.
That sounds more confusing than just adding a reference to 530.
Whatever you want to do is fine.
I don't want to get in the middle between two lawyers, but it sounds to me like it's straightforward to say, or is referenced in 530.4.A.
Minds me of the...
In 530.4A, you're talking about a new owner, should be required to apply.
Right, and you can come in.
A proposed, proposed new owner, yeah.
That ways from 530.2A.
Right.
Yeah, because we say...
And you're not the owner yet, you're a proposed owner.
Oh, and also I see a typo in 530.4A, I just noticed.
Oh, the extra little dot there again?
Well, there's, yeah, I saw the dot, but in 530.4A, about 1, 2, 3, 4, 5 lines up, says in connection with any proposed transfer to a new owner, the propose instead of proposed new owner.
Hey, well, this is a really good time for everybody to be reading and getting really good glasses out and letting know if there are any other little changes or typos or anything like that.
And I would say, I know...
When you look at yourself 10 times, you know, you'll have time to know something.
Yeah.
Well, I know Steve is going to scrutinize this, and if you find any more like inconsistencies or typos or anything, give them to Laura, and we can, you know, if we need to, if it makes sense, if it's, you know, making the language work better.
Yeah, that's great.
We can sneak that in.
Okay, do we need a motion to vote this with the changes to recommend it at town meeting?
Well, what we did was we put all the articles together in one vote, but if you wanted to just vote this one, we can do that.
I just shouldn't vote them, close them out individually.
Okay. We had like a bet going on that, and I lost, so.
The pool, huh?
You're not going to Vegas.
Well, I'm not going to Vegas.
Over on here.
Do you have that one?
I can just say the one.
I want to see the planning board, it pushes it, some sort of gambling operation.
Take out the medical marijuana and the village business and everything else that doesn't relate.
Okay, so, but we are closing the public hearing on the accessory dwellings, right? Okay.
Well, the public hearing is really on all four, so I think just skip over that part about the public hearing and just go, I move for the planning board make a recommendation that the annual town meeting...
You know what? I think we better do it all at the end then, right? Was it advertised the public hearing for all four?
Yeah.
We should do it all at the end then.
Okay.
We better. Because somebody could show up and...
We'll remember to make sure we vote.
We've got people, I think Chris, you're here for village overlay. Let's do the village overlay next.
Did you talk about...
You're working backwards. What we've got is, as identified before, that the bylaw is the same as the one that was published in the legal ad, it's the same one that's been available both to the town hall and with the town clerk's office. This is what we're doing, we're pending the zoning bylaw to replace the final section of sentence in section 560.4, requirements for mixed use with the following language. Frontage requirements in the underlying zoning district or districts may be reduced by a vote of four out of the five members of the planning board, as long as the existing frontage is determined to be adequate for traffic circulation within the site, traffic safety, parking, and access for the vehicular traffic expected to be generated by the user used on the site. Planning board may require review by a traffic engineer or similarly qualified professional prior to making this determination. In accordance with Mass General Law C-41 and 53G, the applicant may be required to pay fees for the employment of such a traffic engineer or similar qualified professional, and any unexpected fee shall be returned to the applicant. In other cases where zoning requirements are not specified, construction must meet the requirements of the underlying zoning district. That is the change. Questions from the board? Comments from the board? Questions from the public? I hear none. Okay. Hearing done, we'll move on to item number two, which is a flexible open space development amended in zoning bylaw. Here again, this is the one identical to what was placed in the legal ad, available both in the planning board and the town clerk's office. What we're looking to do is amend the zoning bylaw, and the proposed changes consist of replacing 550 Sut 6A, minimum requirements for flexible open space development with the following language. A, lot area and lot width. Each lot shall be at least of a size and width, in the opinion of the planning board, capable of supporting construction of a single or two-family dwelling, its accessory structures, and an individual sewage septic system unless a viable alternative method of sewage disposal is proposed. So that is the change. Any questions or comments?
Yeah, what's the change?
Just adding width.
Adding lot width to one of the things that you can change in the flexible open space from what's required. Neil Duggan had requested this so that everything was really spelled out about everything that could be varied in the flexible open space.
Yeah, because there is no lot width requirement in the flexible open space.
No.
He wanted it to be spelled out.
He had asked us to put it in, we've agreed to do it.
Doesn't change anything?
Effectively doesn't. I mean, because it's not spelled out as a requirement, but what it does is it says that it can be, it looks at the lot, and sits there and says the planning board make a determination both the size and the width. That's all. No questions at all? That brings us to the one everybody is here for, and that's the medical marijuana use regulations.
I just ask, going back to the...
Oh, I'm sorry, Chris, go ahead.
Previous one, since the, you know, the board didn't have any questions, I assume the board will be supporting that measure in the village overlay?
What we'll do is...
We have to vote at the end, so...
We'll have to vote, but, yeah. Where we voted and supported up to now, I don't expect it to change.
Okay, thank you.
I approve it, right?
I'm sorry?
I support it if they wrote it.
They wrote it because I... Written things I don't support.
Getting ready for the storm.
So the last article, we're going to discuss the public hearing, is the medical marijuana use regulations. We're looking to amend the zoning bylaw. The proposed changes include putting in section 200 definitions, an addition of a definition for medical marijuana treatment center, and B, addition of a new section 491, which is a temporary moratorium on medical marijuana treatment centers, provide for a moratorium on building permits and other approvals until May 1, 2014, projected to follow at the next annual town meeting to allow the town adequate time to consider how best to regulate facilities associated with the sale and/or processing of marijuana for medical use. Comments from the board? Is anyone here to discuss it? Because I think we've pretty much talked about it in all the other meetings, but let me come back and sit there and just give two seconds' worth of background on it. Situate is like the joining towns, it's come back up and have been, they're dependent upon the state, the State Department of Health to come back up and provide the regulations of which we would then come back up and be able to regulate the facilities. The state has not come forth with it. I think in the article I read today, latest article I read today, it ends up that the May 1 date, which it's due, is, it looks like it's going to be unlikely for the state to come back up and comply with providing us regulations and requirements at that point in time. What this does is sits there and says that it identifies that what a center is, but it comes back and says that we'll put a moratorium out to the year 2014 until we've had adequate time to come back up, get the state regs, discuss the state regs, and figure out how best to handle it in the town of Situate. That's the logic of what it is. We've reviewed it with town council and the other powers that be within the state, and this seems to be a logical approach that not only Situate, but other towns are using. Any other comments? Any questions?
So I have to find a real job for another year?
If what's was said in the Mariner, in the way I understood it, you could be a warehouser. Because they were talking about not having separate facilities, but the state being, having control of all of them, they would have 35 warehouses, which would be owned and managed by the state.
I don't personally understand why this can't be dispensed through pharmacies the way OxyContin and other, you know, drugs that perhaps have unwanted side effects are dispensed.
I think it's the federal law issue and the, because I was looking into that today, in fact, and I think it's not going to be, you know, done like in a pharmacy, because those are all FDA-approved facilities, you know, with FDA-approved drugs, and it's still illegal federally.
That should tell you something, don't you think?
Yeah, it's still illegal federally, so it can't be dispensed under a licensed pharmacy.
Doesn't that give you a hint of some problem?
Interesting.
They're all labeled a DEA regulation.
Yeah.
Now we can have a motion.
Mr. Chairman, could I just make?
Sure.
I don't necessarily want to reopen the issue of accessory dwellings, but listening to this gentleman, it seems to me it might be relatively easy to allay one fear of this reapplication by the new owner, and that would be to insert words to the effect that upon reapplication to the planning board by the new owner, such permit shall be granted by rights so long as conditions of the original permit are adhered to. In other words, our intention is if you're going to continue to abide by the conditions of your deed, we're absolutely not going to deny it or give you any problems.
That sounds fine to me.
That sounds great. It's clear, takes a fear out of the...
That's the intent of it, so...
Yes.
But still a new special permit?
No.
Well, the way you just said it, it would be still a new one, but...
Yes, exactly.
Basically, you're giving the assurance that saying...
You're not, you know, you're not going to run into any problems.
As long as you met the conditions that existed when the original was developed, original permit was granted, as long as that is not changed, then you would be entitled to it by right as a new permit.
You'd have to make sure the accessory dwelling hasn't changed as well in that time.
I wonder how you can say something is going to be provided by right if it's a special permit?
Yeah, that's...
Well, I don't know, I'm not an attorney. I mean, it just, I want to assure that anybody reading this knows that...
It may be unreasonably withheld or something like that.
Oh, even that is a little bit dicey, you know? What's unreasonable?
I wonder if we could arrange to have those successive special permits processed administratively directly by your office without necessarily having to come back to the board?
Well, it's a question of teeth, you know? It either has teeth or it doesn't.
I understand that.
You know, that's...
Neil Pluggin has teeth. He's your zoning officer.
I mean, it's like an ANR lot, right?
I mean, the other way to go...
It's all the requirements of an ANR lot. We got to grant...
Yeah, we have to do it.
You have to grant it.
The other way to go would be, which would require...
That's not a special permit.
Yeah, wait, let's see.
The other way to go, which would, you know, I think we're so far down the process here, I don't know if we have time to do much more with it now, but if we did have more time, which I'm not sure we do, the other way to go would be to say the original special permit will terminate unless the new owner comes in and provides, you know, evidence and all the affidavits and everything like that, versus it does terminate upon. But that provision came out of, I think, three other towns that had that exact same provision, so it, you know, it's been thought through by other towns, and they've worked with it, and it's worked, but I can see how it could be better.
Let's see how it works. You know, if we have to fix it in successive years, we'll do it. But for right now, let's see how it works.
Which one?
As it stands now.
Yeah, we could always amend it.
Robert is better of all of them.
We could always...
My confused mind is frightened. I'm frightened just listening to you guys. You don't want to lose the whole bylaw over that issue, so I would think about it a little bit more before the night's over. If that's the one issue that's going to make or break it?
It's not.
Correct.
No, we have strong support for this from tons of neighborhoods.
We get the Garden Road neighborhood in there and heaven help anybody that stands in opposition to them.
Not worried about that. Just worried about making it better, so...
If it doesn't pass, you know, that's a message. Well, you know, we, we hear messages like everybody else.
I, I think, Bob, your idea, it's, it's good, but it would need some work to make it work legally.
Okay, you know, I certainly accept that from an attorney.
And I kind of feel like if we had more time, it would be worth looking into some more, but of course, you can always, I mean, you can never have a perfect draft of a law, keep going on and on and on and on, but we've had, we've had three hearings on it. We've had three hearings on it, and it is an example from other towns, so I kind of feel like at this point in the game, we should probably try to get it passed, and then if we need to.
Let's see how it works, and then we'll look at it again in the years to come.
When do you have to close the public hearing?
Tonight. I think based on timing, right, no?
It doesn't have to be tonight, but, I mean, you know, it's always convenient to do it in one night, but it doesn't have to be tonight, you can continue it to the next meeting.
We can leave that one open and close the rest of the bylaws.
Yeah, I think that doesn't.
No, that's not going to work either because we cite them all together in terms of the public hearing.
They're all advertised together, so.
I mean, I'm not opposed to working on resolving it.
We could even bring an amendment if we wanted to up at the fall meeting, if it were, you know, some minor change that would.
But I think for the, for the sake of a week, why don't we just come back up and wait until the next meeting, and in the meantime, come up and put that language together.
Yeah.
Close it, close the hearing at the next meeting then?
Yeah. Does that work for the board?
Well, then we have to leave everything open until next time, though.
Yeah.
Right, that's the issue.
I don't believe that's a problem.
No, no, you just have to take a vote to continue it, too.
Right.
So how about a motion to continue our meeting until February?
I don't think we should. I mean, if we could just do it on the one, I would, but I don't think we should continue on all of them because we advertised this and, you know, people had a chance to come out, and I think we're opening a can of worms by continuing it for just this one narrow issue, to leave everything open, to leave accessory open, flexible open space, overlay district, you have to leave them all open. I don't think it's worth it for a technical amendment that we're contemplating maybe doing or not doing. I don't support that.
What, what's the ramifications? I don't understand when you say leaving the others open.
Because people that came out tonight for certain things may not have the opportunity to come out the next time. We could have more people that come in and insert more information into the process next time. We could basically compromise what we've accomplished tonight over one very narrow technical issue that's not very important.
But I can keep the public hearing open and vote three of the, three of the four.
No, I don't think you can. I mean, it wouldn't be wise to, you shouldn't vote before the public hearing's closed. That doesn't make any sense. You hear the public input and then you vote as a board based on the information, so if you leave it open, you don't vote till it's closed. So I personally don't support that, and I don't think it's worth for some narrow technical issue like that, that in my mind is not that important.
To mine, it is.
We know. Are we talking as the board now, or are we, what are we doing here?
We're talking as the board.
Yeah.
So what's, anybody else in the board? I mean, I'm not opposed to keeping it open, I don't think there's a liability to do it.
I'm strongly opposed to that. I think that's a big mistake over a narrow technical issue like that to leave all four of these items open. You know, we advertise as people came out to speak on it and.
Why don't we handle it this way? Why don't we have a motion to either, to close the public hearing?
Yep, I move we close the public hearing.
Do we have a second for that?
I'll second it.
So in effect, if we vote to close the public hearing, then we keep the accessory bylaw the way it is?
Yep.
If we vote not to close the public hearing, then we, we.
No, that's not correct. That's not correct. We close the public hearing, then we talk amongst ourselves, and then we vote what we want to vote based on what the public hearing is, it's two separate things. You close the public hearing, then you discuss amongst as a board what your decision's going to be, they're two separate things.
Yeah, you all can keep talking among yourselves.
We could amend it amongst ourselves.
Based on the input from the public hearing.
Yes, two separate things.
You've had enough input at this point to discuss.
So my motion is that we close the public hearing on all, all four articles, and it was seconded by Eric.
Okay, discussion? All those in favor of closing the public hearing?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, so the public hearing is now closed.
So now, if we want to discuss that, now's the time. Because then we could.
I've said my piece.
And my view on it is that if, you know, I think the benefits in this far outweigh any, you know, little things that can be fixed along the way, and we've got plenty of opportunity to do that down the road if it doesn't work out.
Sure, I mean, if we don't in fact have the opportunity now, then I would certainly support going forward with what we have.
And I think based on the timing of everything, I think we should still look at this issue. You know, we can do it on subsequent meetings and listen to input from whoever wants to give us input, and if there's technical amendments that need to be done, then we look at doing that as soon as the fall town meeting.
I guess from my personal perspective, with all due respect to this gentleman, I think if I was buying a property, I'd actually want to go before the board personally and get that reassurance that they see me and that I'm doing everything the right way and crossing all the Ts and dotting the Is. I mean.
The difficulty would be, however, that you're going to do that after you've already bought the property, the way we've set it up.
No, no, we set it up, they do it before.
The new, the new owner?
Yeah.
But he's not the new owner.
No, they.
It's the perspective.
Oh, I beg your pardon, you're right.
They can come in before the transfer.
That, that we did change.
Yeah. And that's an improvement over Marshfield's because they don't have that.
So if I had a purchase and sale on Dan's property that he's selling to me for a steal, then I think, I mean, as personally, it doesn't scare me, I'd actually want to come before the board and have everything done correctly in my mind, but.
It, it's kind of a dual thing. One, it's a check for us to make sure people are complying, it's also a little bit of a consumer protection thing to say that a new buyer's going to see this and come in front of us, we get our verification, they also understand the process.
Right.
And I think it's important that people don't view us as being frightening. You know, we, we are, we are part of the community, and it's part of community participation. And, you know, we're here to protect the neighborhoods, we're here to protect the buyers as well.
But both of those could be done by changing the language.
Yeah.
But anyway. So what's the pleasure of the board?
Should we vote them individually? Maybe we should vote them individually? Or you want to do it them all at once?
Whatever the board wants to do.
Let's vote them all at once. You want to do, you want to do your? Well, we, well, we've already closed the public hearing, so we're just voting to approve them. Okay. I, I move that the planning board make a recommendation that the annual town meeting to be held on April ninth, two thousand and thirteen, adopt the proposed zoning amendments for a temporary moratorium on medical marijuana treatment centers for changes to flexible open space development, the village business overlay district, and accessory dwellings per the language filed with the town clerk on one eighteen, one eighteen thirteen, as amended at the public hearing held on February seventh, two thousand and thirteen, as the changes are minor and within the scope of the legal advertisement. That's nice anticipation of changes.
Karen drew to that.
She, she's already won because she's, we're going to vote them all at once, right? Okay, so I have a second to the motion.
Second.
Discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
You got it. Give you a chance to work on your amendment. Next item on the agenda is Form A for thirty-sixth in court, or take your place, I'm sorry. Question.
It's a big.
Glance to the left of me, glance to the right of me.
It's a big piece.
Don't worry, you're cocky. So why don't you introduce yourself and tell us what you've talked about? Please upside down. You got the changes to the accessory dwelling.
My name is Paul Arribido from Ross Engineering Company, and the good neighbor is Mrs. Emmett White. She shares an old property showing on the plan that I submitted to you. We're submitting this Form A under the provisions of the Control Law, section eighty-one L. What we're asking to do is to create, is to put this existing building on its own lot. The Emmett's have owned the property since nineteen eighty-four. Some of the data sheets I gave you from the assessor show that these buildings were constructed as far back as eighteen eighty. But this plan shows us the existing dwelling where they live. There's a existing bond in this area. This is an existing office for her husband, he's a doctor, and he has an office here. By way of history, this property used to include a house that proudly stands on this property, it's owned by the Arches. This house was built in eighteen eighty or eighteen ninety-five according to the social security which I receive today. This house here was the maid's quarters for the maid house.
An accessory dwelling.
Thirty years ago. This, this here was, was a house that was lived in by the people who drove the carriages to the house. The carriages would be parked in this area here, and the person that drove the carriages, he was in here with his family.
The good old days.
This building here was built, this is very old, the car they got from the assessor showed that this is old. Historically, those go back to the nineteen hundreds anyway. But from what the assessor's records, this being built in eighteen ninety-five or eighteen eighty, I think this was eighteen ninety, and this one here in the half a day.
Why would they have dates on two of them, not that one?
I don't know. What I have, I mentioned my letter, there's some very old photographs here of these buildings. What I want to show you is, these photographs go back to nineteen twelve, nineteen eleven, nineteen oh seven. What it shows is, this is the house that's on the Archer lot, which was the maid's quarter, this is what it looks like today. University behind it is the building they're asked to put on the smaller lot, which is this one here. If you look at the chimneys, you can see the chimney here, it's a, you know, it looks like it's about sixteen inches square, and the top is corbeled.
Yeah.
And this house is the same as this house, you can see the same chimneys. You see that this is the chimney of the maid house, the same style. This photograph here, this is the building in question, you can see a chimney in here as well for a fireplace. These photographs go back to the early nineteen hundreds. This is the inside of the building, the, the subject building, it shows a small child here, you can see that lamp in it, it's very old. This radiator has curlicues in it, which goes back to the turn of century according to Scott Anderson from Anderson Fuel. They had a fireplace in here, and this was the living quarters for the man who would drive the carriages and bring the occupants to the main house. He would come in from take their court, come along here, drive them off, you can see a large stairway in the front where the people would go in the stairway, bring the carriages around here and park it, and he and his family would be in this house here.
This is actually the front of the house?
That was the front of the house.
That'll be interesting, that's very interesting.
Because the front of the house, you had a view of the ocean. This is looking right in front, this, this was off fields.
This is. No, I'm thinking the ma, yeah, right, but I'm thinking the main house.
Yeah, the main house.
So actually, the front of the main house is on this side.
That's the front, this is the view from the front of the house in nineteen oh seven, they looked across the cleared fields right to the harbor, and you can see the lighthouse in the distance here.
Wow.
Well, very neat.
If you've lived in town a while, you'd hear the old town and say that turn of century, you could see the ocean from almost anywhere in Sitewatt. Sam Tilden used to tell me that many times.
Yeah.
Did they cut down all the trees?
To build the beds. Well, it was all farming.
Farming, right?
Yes, farming, and they used the wood for firewood, and they used to sell firewood in Boston because they didn't have trees there, and they didn't have gas yet. So what these pictures are demonstrating is the, the age of the buildings. This is the inside of the small building. These, these were obtained by Mrs. Emmett from the owners that lived there.
So that's the inside of this house here? This house is the, the small house I think you're talking about? It doesn't seem to have any chimney in it.
This here.
There's a chimney, there's a chimney. That's not even our house.
Not your house, okay. Okay, what, what, this was the one.
This is the office?
Where's that house?
That's not, I thought this one was the small, the one on the small lot.
It's all shingles, all the same, it's all shingle style.
Is, is the green, the green trim is your house?
Yeah, the green trim is our house.
And the office?
Both, and, yeah, and then the red trim are the Archer, is the Archer's house.
Yeah.
I took pictures of the chimneys so you could see that they're all the same.
It's blue.
Terrific piece of progress.
Yeah, well, obviously, this, this is a bad house.
I was going to say, that doesn't work right at all.
Yeah, it doesn't, well, it's hard to get in there, and it's, you know, real hard to look around and to see which house is which.
Paul? Can I look at that just for?
This is, this is, yep, you can see the chimneys, this is the chimney of the maid's house, this is the chimney in the barn, and you can see how they're, they're all corbeled, and this is where the tops are all corbeled.
Who was going to be?
Yeah, no kidding.
Do you have any photographs of the small house from the outside?
Right here. Yeah, this is the, it shows the chimney, which is, it's the same design as the one in the maid's house and the maid's house.
This number's thirty-two and thirty-six.
It's got to be the address.
You can see the next side of it, and this here shows, shows the maid's house, and then that's the building in question there, with the chimney in that. You can see the roof's line, it's A-shaped, it's the same one.
I don't know if they coincide, to tell you the truth, Eric, I really don't.
So that's going to be taken that way?
No, it was taken this way, they were looking, this house.
Well, I can't, I can't turn it this way, so you're right, it's, it's looking this way.
So, yes, someone's looking up, up slow.
Yeah.
So, having, you know, appreciated the historical nature of all of these buildings, what's the intention of this subdivision?
Why, why do we do that? I, I've done several of these. Every one I've done, the reason they've done it is for mainly estate purposes. Once you have a house on its own separate lot, they can go to the bank and they can give them more.
Value goes up, yeah.
So this would be residence that would be created on a five thousand square foot lot and then could be sold as a separate property?
They could.
Okay, I guess, a couple of questions, and I'm sure that you've got answers, or Laura does, but the, the only frontage this has is that on a private way, does that, does that any problems, Laura?
Well, I mean, this is a pretty narrow private way, it's, it's one that, I know the planning board looked at a Form A on this, on this road before, but it is dirt, you know, it's, you wouldn't really be able to get two cars going by each other on it, but, you know.
But there's no legal restriction in terms.
This house here, this house here was built brand-new about, what, five or six years ago? Using take your place.
Yep.
It was a Form A lot.
The other.
I mean, I, I think if you, if you were really concerned about it, you might have some, you know, some legal basis to deny it, but the problem is that you've got the two existing houses on, on, you know, you're not building a new house.
They, they need access to the, to the existing house anyway, and they already have it.
Yeah.
My, my other question is, you're proposing to create a five thousand square foot lot, which is a non-conforming lot.
That's right.
Does that present any problems? I know pre-existing non-conforming is one thing, but this isn't pre-existing, we're, we're actually creating a new non-conforming lot.
No, we passed the bylaw that basically allows us to do, to split it out.
Okay.
Right, and it, what it says is, the intent when we passed it was to make it as, as close a zoning as you can, but in reality, you can't always make it closer.
But what, what you're doing on the subdivision control law, you're instantaneously creating a legal non-conforming lot in two thousand and thirteen. Here's the subdivision control law, says if you have two or more buildings on a lot that was a part of adoption of subdivision control law, which our law is nineteen forty-seven, and you can put each building on its own lot, and that's what we're doing now. You don't have to meet the required setbacks in a lot area, however, if they choose to do any work on that structure in the future, you want to put in addition, they, they have to go to the zoning board for relief, they may not give it to them.
Yeah, be treated just like any other five thousand square foot lot in town?
No, the access, you know, people drive down and take their place, they drive to the house, but you can see the gravel road that goes all the way down here.
Okay.
Just, and then connects to the court.
Okay.
There's a brand-new house right here, their driveway's right right in here, they just, that's up for sale yet.
Yeah, the road goes here.
Where's the. And the, I'm going to drive down here, and I'll come down here, and you walk this way or vice versa.
Because I've, I've taken my car all the way down. I mean, Laura's right, it's gravel and it's narrow, but it still has, has access.
Okay.
And when we Form A, is it this house or? Is it this one or?
It's this one here.
One before. We came back up and we, we were concerned about whether there was public safety access, and that was not an issue.
Okay.
It's one you might want to think twice about, about creating a new buildable lot that didn't have a house on it, but I mean, this is not really that same situation.
I see.
Well, that's the point of it, if it was, you know, historically two houses, you know, why would we prohibit them from separating them out, you know, it's not creating anything new. That's the point of that law, I think, is to say, if it's historic, it's almost like as if it were pre-existing non-conforming already, and we're just letting them put a lot line there, you know, some.
We were one of the last towns, I think, in the state, I think, that got that adopted.
Okay, I'm, thank you. I'm cool.
Laura?
Uh, no, that's, that's all I had, and we've got a motion here.
I think it's really just a factual finding enough based on the evidence. We feel that these were two houses on a single lot before nineteen fifty-four.
Actually, we, we have that, we have that in the motion.
What was, Bill, what was the thing you said that we were the last town to adopt?
What is the date of the subdivision control law?
It ended up, it used to be you went to, you could go to ZBA and have, if you had two lots, two houses on one lot, you didn't split them. But we ended up, the way we operated for years, the only way we'd do it was a ZBA and a various, and they wouldn't let them do it.
Ah, okay.
So then we came back up and we changed and adopted, what is it, M? I'm not sure what it is, but we, we adopted it, set there and allowed us to split that lot.
Okay.
You guys ready for a motion? I move to.
So, oh, excuse me, I just, I'm, I'm just curious about something. So are these setbacks then, those are non-conforming as well, right?
That's right, yeah.
So what, what's, what's preventing me from making this a two thousand square foot lot and having the property line hug the foundation?
Nothing, we actually did one last year on Gannett Road.
Really? Okay, all right, fine. I don't want to create new law.
They're creating it, I think what they think is a manageable law.
No, I understand that, it's just, you know, what, what restrictions are there against really insane doing?
Well, I mean, is that, do we need to discuss that? Do we need to amend the bylaw in the next round? It's one of those issues.
All right, not tonight.
And also, why would you do that?
Yeah.
Well, amend it, you mean?
No, 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 why would you have a lot line that hugged the foundation?
Well, you could have a situation where there's two houses right next to each other, right on a frontage road or something, and you may, you know, there may be planning reasons where we wouldn't want to do it, we want to buffer. We want to buffer and.
Hemmerock, Cedar Point.
I've lived in developments with zero lot lines.
Bad situation, it could be a bad result if we didn't amend our bylaw.
I had a row house in Philadelphia.
Okay, I need a motion.
All right.
I move to endorse, as approved under the subdivision control law not required, a plan of land in the town of Situate, Massachusetts, located at thirty-six Tichner Place, prepared by Ross Engineering Company Incorporated for Stephen W. Emmett and Deborah Emmett Pike, dated January twenty-second, twenty thirteen. As the division of the tract of land shown is not a subdivision because two or more structures were standing on the property prior to the date of the subdivision control law went into effect in the town of Situate, which Town Council has determined is August third, nineteen forty-seven, and one of such, one of such buildings remains standing on each of those, the proposed lots.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
I have a question.
Nice history lesson.
As a non, I keep saying this, as a non-native, Tichner, is that correct pronunciation?
Unbelievable, yeah.
How do you pronounce it?
Tichner.
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 It was just, it was one huge loop all the way around from Tichner Court to Tichner Place, which is why it's so strange to have those two streets, you know.
Separated.
Separated. It was all just one.
But the connector went through the property, your property. Right. So it was like a big driveway.
Yeah, it was.
I need three.
Yeah, thank you, thank you very much.
There's four.
Thank you. Pick them up tomorrow afternoon.
It's like.
Pick them up tomorrow afternoon. Make you feel like you're back in Watertown.
Around six, seven o'clock at night.
Yeah.
Yeah, so you'd be driving like from Clayton to Watertown, you'd be outside.
Is the town hall open tomorrow?
Only till noon.
So far, it's open in the morning.
Well, once you, Laura, just call the TV station and tell them it's closed.
Oh, there you go.
Well, they may have changed it, because from what I understand, right, you said that the schools are closed now, right?
Yeah.
Because they originally were.
Good night.
Good night, thanks.
Good night.
Good night.
I can check.
Yeah, the speech. Yeah, first they went to, first they went to early release and then they waited a few hours and they canceled them.
But I saw Tricia earlier tonight and there was no, nothing mentioned about.
Wait, webmaster, town of Situate, important message from emergency management officials.
Message number one?
That was at five o'clock, though.
If that's message number one, that's the old.
No, when I was homecoming to the meeting tonight, our phone rang with a message, you know, the automated, that school is canceled. Right before I left to come here.
Reverse nine one one?
Yeah.
They're not talking about flooding by any chance at this point, right?
I heard on the news that they were talking about some flooding down.
Saturday morning, is the, that's when the high tide, around ten AM?
It's the ten, ten total effect, that's probably an hour. It's affected me about an hour later. Moving on, accounting?
Uh, well, we have the motion ready to transfer the extra money that's in the guaranteed deposit account into the general fund.
Let's do it.
Okay.
I move to transfer seventy-five thousand, two hundred and fifty dollars and eighty-one cents from the planning board guarantee deposit account to the general fund per the memorandum from the town planner to the planning board dated January twenty-ninth, twenty thirteen.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
We have minutes? I assume everybody's working from home tomorrow?
Yeah.
I'm not, I've got to go in for the morning, at least.
Really?
Yeah.
Well.
Is it just the?
I'm a little close enough, I can walk to the office if I need to, but. Might not be a bad idea.
I guess it's all just the one, right? I was looking for.
Sure I could get in without any trouble.
So, I move that we approve the Situate Planning Board minutes for January twenty-fourth, twenty thirteen.
Second.
Those are the same as in the email?
That would.
Now, this is the meeting that I was brain dead on and didn't come, so I should not vote, is that correct?
If you're not there.
Which part of that do you want me to? Don't even.
It says here, you were not here and you were brain dead.
Yes.
So it does say that literally.
So you could vote on either of those.
Either of those options, yeah, I can ratify that, I am brain dead.
Got a motion, second, all those in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Super. Liaison reports? I'll give you one, I went to the open, I don't know if you saw the Mariner today?
No, I didn't get it.
They had, they, we've come back up and we've hired the Conway Group to come in and look at the open space that we've got, see how it's utilized and what the people would like to see for it. Well, the Conway Group led, were out at Mount Hope, was last Thursday. Am I right, Karen, Thursday? It was last Thursday. They had a facilitator for the Conway Group come out and they basically had filled up Mount Hope. It was, it was a pretty good attendance and some pretty good, it was, I thought there was going to be more dialogue amongst everybody, but basically it was to fill out the, fill out the forms, you know, which areas you liked, which areas you thought needed protected, and that sort of thing. And then they're gonna come back up and make that as part of the proposal to come back to, to the town.
Great. Is there, I was curious, since they are kind of consolidating all of these things, are they trying to brand it as one? I use that brand, but I mean, like the.
They've just referred to it as the screen space. But I mean, you can get, there's enough trails out there now that you can literally get from one, you know, one parcel to the other, but there's no place that it shows you where one parcel is, ends and the other begins.
Well, I guess the thing is, we've branded the parcel, we've called it the Situate Town Forest, right?
Yeah.
Uh, so, it's a little.
At this point, they're not branded, no.
Okay, like, some, that might be a good marketing strategy.
Weston Woodlands or something.
Yeah, something like that.
And there was also a meeting of the Facility Management Steering Committee, which was a week ago, Monday. And I'm on the committee, and Stephen's wife's on the committee. I didn't make that because we were voting at CPC, so there's another meeting on that on the twelfth, which will be next Tuesday. So I will attend that. That leads us to the town planners' report.
Well, you mentioned, can you give us a quick update on CPC?
We haven't finished voting all of the articles. What we've done is, we've come back up and, the two major articles in terms of trails or paths that we talked about, one is from Countryway from Ronnie Schoens all the way down to Green Bush. That was originally, came in in something in the neighborhood of nine hundred thousand.
Right.
And what we've done is, because we're trying to keep the expenditures in the million two to a million five range, which is about what we get this year, about a million two we get this year, and that. But we've got, what we've looked to do is to see if they could come back and logically split that in some sort of half, so maybe spend four to five hundred thousand dollars and do part of it this year, part of it in the subsequent year. And we held off on the harbor walk. We've held on that pending some more information to see whether that logically could be split into halves. So we held off on that and then there's, and one other article that came back out that was held, and that is putting some of the town archives on microfiche. And the question becomes is not, do we want to preserve them? The question becomes is part of that expenditures is a microfiche reader and a creator, you know?
What's, what's the advantage of microfiche over, over?
Digitizing.
They last longer.
Really?
Digitized?
Digitized has, it's an eight to a ten year life. If I put them on a CD or put them on a tape, yeah.
Yeah, really?
Microfiche is obviously much longer than that.
What about if we were to put them in some sort of cloud arrangement that was self-renewing?
Yeah, just file them.
Yeah, but then, you may be able to do that. But what we've looked at is, the question is, do we want to spend thirty thousand dollars for the microfiche? And the ability to come back up and create it.
I think you're gonna find that technology is, you know, ten years from now, people won't even know what you're talking about.
Right now, right now, if you talk to all the people that do archives, that's the state of the art.
Really? I mean, I deal a lot with genealogical research. And, you know, for years, all that stuff was on microfilm and microfiche and that's way on its way out.
Yeah.
You know, the, in fact, there's a huge project right now to digitize the nineteen forty census, which just got completed, you know, was distributed literally around the world, and it's done.
Yeah.
Would you say the nineteen forty?
The nineteen forty census has now become public. And so, you know, these are people within living memory now that were, that were part of the census. And so you can literally go up and look up your grandparents or whoever there, and there's all kinds of information about households and jobs and, you know, where people were living and all that kind of stuff.
But then some of the other projects that we voted, we voted for, I think, Dan, you and I talked about the lights for the skate rink, the lights for the field in the back, striping of basketball courts, not only here, but in, but in Hemrock. And then smaller expenditures for the historical, basically putting the Widow's Peak back and Little Red Schoolhouse. We voted not to take the one horse Shay and restore that because we really don't have a place to put it. Because Quishings one horse, originally Shay, it's Shay, on it. And but we've come back up and we've come back up to do some additional inspection work on Larson Tower, as well as some archives and some books. They've got books that were shown at certain points at the harbor of all the cargo that came in and the cargo that was unloaded and that. And that, so they have it on, almost on a daily basis that are now going to be kept at the lighthouse, preserved.
That's pretty cool.
It's phenomenal. So that's, that's where we are, so we should finalize, oh, and we had ten thousand dollars for an open space plan. Do an update to the open space plan.
There used to be a carriage shed out behind the Unitarian Church, next to the tower.
Oh, yeah?
Do you remember that?
By the way, I don't.
And it was just that, it was a carriage shed for the people who came to church and wanted to put their carriages in there. And there was probably eight, six or, at least six or eight or ten, you know, stalls, kind of.
Parking garage.
Be a good place for the Shay.
Yeah, but that's the concern. The concern is, even the Smithsonian would like to have it. The question is, it doesn't fit, it's too big to fit in any place where they could put it and we really don't have a place to put it.
What a shame.
But I mean, it's just, it's historical, real historical thing.
Yeah. Maybe when they put the new addition on the library, they can sort of create an exhibit space for that.
Maybe we can keep this building, keep it right here. Okay, town or planner report?
Uh, the application for the technical assistance from MAPC for the Economic Development Committee is just about ready to go. It's gonna go out under Tricia's signature.
That's the DLTC letter?
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, I'll sign it.
Oh, good. We didn't quite talk about it, but I guess you all would, would agree that we should have a planning board letter of support.
Yeah.
Good, and, let's see, the project on sea level rise is, is really starting to get going. We've got a consultant hired, their name is Kleinfelder, out of Cambridge. I've heard good things about them. We're probably gonna have a page on the town website, probably be connected to the planning board site, the conservation site on sea level rise and why we should be thinking about it, so.
There's a couple of very good sites, and I'm sure you've seen them, that have mapping and talk about that a lot. NOAA has one and somebody else has one.
Oh, the Digital Coasts?
I guess that's it, right, yeah.
Yeah, that's gonna be one of the links.
So links, links to that probably ought to be a part of what you put on the, on the website.
Yeah, that was a link we were, we were gonna do.
Yeah.
And then I wanted to pass out some draft reports to town meeting. These are the kind of political statements, if you will, about why these articles are important and why the planning board supports them. And this is something that you all should vote on, but before, you know, we vote on them, I'd like to get everybody's comments and thoughts and, you know, if there's something that was left out or needs to be changed or rearranged or whatever, you know, please let me know.
It looks like there's been a change in the process, because as I remembered it, what we used to do is to come back up and indicate that we had a report that had to be, had to be read.
Uh, you mean just the order of who speaks when?
No, this is a report sitting there saying that the planning board on such and such held the date.
Oh, this includes that also?
Because the last town meeting, a couple of town meetings that we've had recently, we've not made that report.
Yeah, I think, I think you did. I think you had to, otherwise the articles.
We actually should have read these tonight, you know.
Because all that goes to the H's.
Well, we can vote on them the next time.
No, no, no.
Where you all hadn't seen it, I didn't want to.
No, but I guess to explain, for the public hearing, this would have been a good way to explain why we were amending the articles for the public, because it's in language that's very understandable.
Oh.
Yeah, I mean, this is very similar to the letter that we put that we sent to the board's leg.
So. And I think that's it from here.
Okay, so you want us to look at that and get back to you?
Can you email these around too, if you have?
Oh, sure.
Easy to remember.
That's easier.
Then we can just respond.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, that's good.
Individually.
Do I have a second for Bob's motion?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
We are adjourned.
Excellent.